For the next item, I am pleased that we will be hearing a presentation related to our Equity Ambassador Program. And we're so grateful that Dr. Manns will be presenting along with students who are part of that Equity Ambassador Program. And of course, they are on summertime, so they are incredibly generous to be here with us this afternoon to share their perspectives. I know this board values student voice tremendously, as do I, and so hearing directly from our students is so important to us. And so we welcome them all here, and I'm going to turn it over to them to begin the presentation.
Hi, I'm Paige Barron, and I'm an Equity Ambassador from Glen Allen High School. Before we begin, in honor of the centuries-old tradition of many Native and Indigenous peoples, we gratefully acknowledge the Native Peoples on whose ancestral homelands we gather, as well as the diverse and vibrant Native communities who make their home here today. More specifically, as we gather in the area of Highland Springs, Virginia, we recognize the Native inhabitants, leaders, families, students, and teachers of this land, the Chickahominy and Powhatan Peoples. Good afternoon, school board members and Superintendent Cashwell, thank you for joining us.
My name is Jayden Nguyen Vong, and I have had the privilege of being the executive representative of Glen Allen High School this year. From its inception, the Equity Ambassador Program was designed to create a safe place for students across the school district to discuss current issues impacting our school communities while providing them with knowledge and leadership skills to assist them as they work to promote equity and diversity efforts in their school community. It has always been our mission to create a space, a safe, open space for students to feel seen and heard. All students are allowed to apply, but we ask that the sponsors intentionally identify students to ensure a variety of diversity and representation. This work is in alignment with our cornerstones of equity and opportunity, as well as safety and wellness. In addition, the Equity Ambassadors Program was identified as one of the 2021 National Association of Counties Achievement Award winners.
My name is Kashif Ahmed, and I am the Executive Equity Ambassador of Deep Run High School, arguably the school with the most spirit. So today, we'd like to start off our presentation with a quote from the first African-American Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall. "When you see wrong, or inequality, or injustice, speak out, because this is your country. This is your democracy. Make it, protect it, pass it on." And that's exactly what we want with Equity Ambassadors. We want all students to be at the forefront of social change. We want all students to be ambassadors of truth and justice. And we want all students to live the legacy of Thurgood Marshall, the same legacy that he integrated into the foundation of our country. We want all Equity Ambassadors to start using their voices and then turn to their hands so that they can change any injustice they see themselves. And by sowing the seeds of activism and resilience at such an early age, we want all students to make sure that Henrico County becomes a more meaningful and impactful home for all students.
My name is Nishkamal Hothra, and I'm an Equity Ambassador at Deep Run High School. The Equity Ambassador Program, despite being virtual, implemented numerous programs that focused on developing the leadership skills of students and fostering a more inclusive and accepting community. All Equity Ambassadors across all high schools had to complete leadership modules to examine terminology relating to equity and inclusivity, and were trained to self-evaluate bias and perceptions. In addition, we were trained to facilitate conversations about social issues and were introduced to the importance of cultural responsiveness and allowing voices, especially underrepresented voices, to be heard. Our Equity Ambassadors participated in self-paced activity modules on their roles as student equity leaders, specifically regarding common language, cultural responsiveness, and servant leadership. Students learned about essential equity terminology, and there was an intentional focus on distinguishing words that are commonly confused with one another, such as equality and equity. These leadership modules were completed on an all-site-based level per school, and each school group participated in meaningful discussions regarding the content. One of our level program opportunities included the creation of cultural awareness videos. This was in response to students expressing a desire to have an opportunity to develop broader cultural and ethnic awareness. Students voluntarily assisted with designing cultural awareness videos as part of our Student Professional Development Series. The student project, "I Am Somebody," demonstrates a scenario in which students participate articulating language to address an equity experience while at school. All videos will be posted on the Equity Ambassador YouTube program.
Hello, my name is Sajabolu, and I'm the executive representative from Henrico High School. I'll be talking a little bit about our Language Navigators Program, as well as our curriculum creation. So in response to requests from students and families for easier access for information, our Language Navigators have produced videos in their native languages to explain vital HCPS information for families in our immigrant communities. Some examples include a how-to video on completing RICO forms and COVID-19 forms. And lastly, for the curriculum creation, students posed the idea of having a course offered at Henrico, I mean, high school level that would offer a global view of cultural backgrounds to address concerns about representation and belonging. Students were given an opportunity to explore and articulate their own historical connections, and then they came to understand how to conceptualize, collaborate, and produce curriculum. For a final activity, students created a sample lesson to demonstrate their interpretation of an ethnic studies course experience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alina Rastagar, and I'm the executive representative from Godwin High School. To maintain an Equity Ambassador charter at our schools, each group is expected to facilitate two activities that respond to a concern about inequity or an issue of inclusivity. We identify the area of concern based on student qualitative data and school-wide quantitative data. Due to schools being virtual for most of the year, the school-based Equity Ambassador group was only asked to complete one activity, but many of our schools did more than required.
At Deep Run, Equity Ambassadors has manifested in a multitude of ways, and for one, we started our own Instagram page where we post various cultural, ethnic, and racial events that are going around the world, really, to make sure that our students are informed about current events and they're informed citizens of the world. Second, we recently started releasing editorials about how our progress has been throughout the months. And in those newsletters, we're telling the community about guest speaker opportunities, community service opportunities, and the progress we've made as Equity Ambassadors, but also to showcase the future of Equity Ambassadors in the coming months. And lastly, our most notable triumph through this whole year of coronavirus, I think, is that we started a program called Uncomfortable Conversations. And this is where we are inviting minority leaders throughout Henrico County to have sensitive, yet open conversations about questions you may not be asking someone on a daily basis, so that we can truly see how it feels to be a minority living in the United States.
Hi, my name is Gianna Young, and I was this past year's executive representative from Douglas Freeman High School. This year, I'm proud to announce we held our third annual Freeman Family and Culture Day and the first virtual culture day, given the circumstances of this past year. Our interpretation of a culture day is a day that we devote to celebrate the diversity of cultures and backgrounds that we have in our Freeman community. I remember the first year of Equity Ambassadors, my sophomore year, our group was brainstorming ideas after we were tasked with creating an equity event by our very own Dr. Manns, and we came up with Culture Day, and it stuck. Students volunteered to be involved, whether as a presenter or performer, or on the logistics side. A fun fact I've learned while involved in Equity Ambassadors is that the Freeman community has over 40 languages represented, which is why this year, one of the topics that we chose for this year, this year's Culture Day is language. As you can see, the bottom middle slide is a photo of one of our students teaching a basics Arabic 101 lesson. But I found that Culture Day gives students a voice to share the unique aspects of their culture, and it allows our community to come together in a more meaningful and personal way.
In order to connect our student body and faculty with varying perspectives from the community, we invited several guest speakers to Glen Allen High School virtually, representing educational institutions and companies that focus on advocacy to speak. Some examples include Studio 23, an art center located in Scotts Edition in Richmond that offers classes, workshops, and other programs which revolve around representing social activism and art. The Market at 25th is a local grocery store in Church Hill, Virginia, that combats food scarcity and food deserts. Their mission is to provide healthy and accessible foods to marginalized and lower-income communities and break the stigmas of shopping in historically redlined neighborhoods. In addition, we also invited guest speakers from Virginia Commonwealth University to speak about anti-racism, a speaker from the Virginia Holocaust Museum, and other speakers who discussed the history of Monument Avenue and the development of the city of Richmond. Also, the Equity Ambassadors co-sponsored the Read Woke Challenge to promote the reading of underrepresented voices, which both faculty and students could participate in. For example, an Asian Culture Club reread "The Best We Could Do," a visual comic by T. Buie, which chronicled a young Vietnamese family's experience during the Vietnam War, their escape from Vietnam, and emigration to the United States. By inviting guest speakers to discuss anti-racism and encouraging our students and staff to explore diverse literature, our school community is exposed to a spectrum of human experiences from different backgrounds, fostering a better sense of cultural responsiveness and understanding.
This year at Henrico High, our goal was to engage the various student groups on campus in our equity initiatives. So with this mission in mind, our group founded the Henrico Times Equity Newsletter, which is aiming to bridge the gap between student groups. This newsletter features an article contribution from our school's Black Student Union, a shout-out to an Equity Ambassador who embodies the spirit of this program, as well as resources for students who want to learn more about what it means to be anti-racist. There are actually copies available on this table behind me for anyone in the audience and the board who wants to read it. Furthermore, we worked with our Student Advisory Council to conduct a student equity survey about how students feel about the equity initiatives of Henrico High School. We then use this data to guide our further initiatives. In order to provide students a safe space to discuss current events, cultural bias, and racism, we hosted a Talk It Out event. And lastly, we ended the year with a student workshop in collaboration with the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, or VCIC. Members from VCIC guided students through activities that taught us about the cycle of prejudice and leadership skills. Thank you.
Unfortunately, our representative from the Hound Springs A-Center wasn't able to make it today, so I'm going to be filling in for her. The Hound Springs A-Center Equity Ambassadors hosted a student-led equity self-care event where faculty, staff, and students completed fun activities in the promotion of self-care. These activities consisted of virtual trivia and a virtual escape room. The purpose of this event was to bring all students together and to have something that teachers could use for years to come. It was also used to show the way that society views mental health, and for students to hear from multiple perspectives, especially during the pandemic. This event provided resources for students and staff to use if they need assistance or more information regarding mental health issues.
At Millsy-Godwin High School, our Equity Ambassador's team chose to create the Eagles Care social media account, not only for diversity recognition, but also to expand our chapter and its mission to students across the school. Through our account, we aim to create an inclusive community to spread awareness, acknowledge diversity, and promote equity. Thus far, we have created posts recognizing notable African-American individuals and women who have made significant contributions to our community. In the following years, we are planning to expand upon this program by educating our audience regarding equity-related issues and providing a platform for them to speak out about issues of their concern. Due to its virtual setting, this year, an Equity Club was requested in the Godwin community more than any other year to not only provide a safe and trusting environment for students to be able to express their concerns and opinions, but also to provide an opportunity for ESL students to thrive in an online platform with the assistance of student tutors. Through the Equity Club, we encourage students to participate in daring discourse to address and seek solutions to a variety of issues, including subjects such as mental health and mental health awareness and racial justice together.
Hi, my name is Jack Lacy, and I'm a recently graduated senior and executive representative from J.R. Tucker High School. One of the biggest issues that we have at Tucker High School is self-separation on the basis of center, class, and a range of various student and faculty backgrounds. As one of the most diverse high schools in the county and the 21st most diverse high school in the nation, this student-led forum connects students across Tucker to share opportunities and resources for post-secondary exploration into college or the workforce. This forum is housed on the Tucker Schoology page and is accessible to thousands of students and teachers from all grade levels. There are discussion boards, as well as resource folders for a range of different areas of studies and employment opportunities ranging from agriculture and natural resources conservation to repair, production, and construction. These discussion boards are accessible to all members of the Schoology group, where students can ask and answer each other's questions. These boards are moderated and kept running by the Equity Ambassadors to form a virtual community of Tucker students. The need for this forum was voiced throughout this year's virtual learning from Tucker students, as many reported a lack of resources and accommodations provided to them online. This year's students faced major burnout and hopelessness. However, the accomplishments showcased to you today show that students want to take the initiative and create change regardless of the circumstances. In the Equity Ambassadors Program, students learn, discuss, and practice dismantling the systemic socioeconomic and racial barriers within their schools. My hope for the future of this program is that students will be able to create larger-scale versions of the projects seen today, so that the next generations of empowered students have the opportunity to work collaboratively with the school board on creating effective change towards a more equitable, diverse, and inclusive Henrico County public schools. Thank you. We will now be taking any questions.
Dr. Manns, did you want to add anything? Okay, she, this is a perfect example of for students by students, and so I want to thank you all again before we turn it over to the board for questions and comments. And I also want to thank Dr. Manns for her leadership of this effort. It's extraordinary, extraordinary young people and extraordinary leader before you. And so, board members all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. So, Dr. Manns, is the format that we ask you questions, or the ambassadors? How do you want to proceed?
Either one. They're prepared.
Okay, so we can direct questions either to you or to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Well, we're going to start with Ms. Shea.
Hi, I wasn't expecting to start with me. Good afternoon. We're so glad that y'all are here to share. And the one thing that really just resounded as y'all were talking is how articulate each one of you are and how passionate you are. And we want that for all of our students, to be able to engage in something they're passionate about, engage their community in those discussions, and be articulate. And so, thank you for being here to do that. I made lots of notes about the amazing things you, y'all, were doing. I went ahead and gave Eagles Care a follow since Godwin's one of my, one of my schools. And I appreciated both the representatives from Freeman and Tucker pointing out truly how diverse those schools are and over in my neck of the woods. So I just have actually one specific question, if that's okay, for Mr. Lacy, who talked a little bit about having a school-wide forum on Schoology. And I'm just interested on kind of the moderating of that. Did you find the moderating of the forum to be challenging?
Right. So the participation of the forum has been mainly done by students. So I was trying to get student equity ambassadors to like moderate it and go through the forums and answer people's questions, and also add any resources that they had, because I know a lot of senior equity ambassadors that had just graduated had their own experiences that they could share with the Tucker community. So I went in there and included some, some helpful hints and things that I did in my time as a high schooler on my journey to college. So that's kind of what I base it off of, so that any, you know, students help each other.
That's awesome. And so, did you find the response to the forum to be largely positive? I know in social media, sometimes people say a lot of things behind a screen that they may not live in. So did you find the tone of the forum to be respectful amongst students?
I think so. I mean, I think this is something that was needed, especially because this year is mainly virtual for students. They were comfortable communicating with each other on a virtual platform, and through this forum, though, it can be used like throughout the years for them to continue communicating with each other.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. We, I love to hear that. Sometimes, social media can be a tough place, and Schoology is kind of like our own version of social media, and so I love to hear that it was such a positive experience as we look at, as y'all were saying, how to adapt some of the, some of the wins that have really resounded within your communities at other schools. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Atkins.
So, when, you know, as each of you had your moment to share, I had these other thoughts, and they were just integrating with each other, just weaving back and forth as, as each of you spoke. And, you know, what you've accomplished and how you presented yourselves today, it just makes me smile. You can't see it, but I want you to know that it's there. My eyes are small, so you won't be able to see it in my smiles either from there, so I want to verbally tell you that it is there. I think that I'm already amazed at what you will accomplish in the future in this space because of what you've already done. And it takes courage, it takes persistence, and given the last four years, just some sheer grit, and speaking up and making a difference in, in your schools for students that may not even know your name. And that's bravery. And I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you. I also think as you continue to strive for inclusivity and for equality and equity for yourselves and for students, know that, that it matters all the time. And that's why you're doing the work that you're doing, and you're doing it gracefully, respectfully, and it's impactful, and it's purposeful. And I could go on and on, but I will not. I just want you to know how proud I am of you and the many students and your friends that you've worked with as well. I know there are many, and they are not here. So if you could tell them that Mrs. Atkins said that she was proud of you as well, I would appreciate that. And I'll close with John Lewis, who said, "When you see something that is not right, that's not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something. You have to do something." And guess what? You are doing just that. So you are fulfilling his wishes as well. Wishes of the past, wishes of the present, and I already know wishes of the future. I'm proud of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you for being here today.
Ms. Consella.
Yes, I would, all of my colleagues, and I think we appreciate not only you being here today, but the work that you've done even amidst a pandemic that helps move us forward. Because even when you're not here speaking with us, sharing what you're doing, you're sharing it with Dr. Manns or within your buildings, and it makes us way back to us. But since I have you here, I'd like to take the opportunity to express that this board, this administration is listening, and we just appreciate everything that you're doing, have done, will do, and that we do want to hear from you. Our wives, our students, and as many educators often, and parents, or probably anyone that's been around children, all we have to do is ask the children, or the students in this case, and they'll let us know exactly what we need to do. So we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Mrs. Aggron.
Thank you. I wanted to, if you could pick a slide, it doesn't matter, the fact that you guys shared what you're doing in your individual schools, I was so appreciative of seeing the work on the ground that you're doing. And, but I think in every instance, it was work of unity, of bringing people together, not dividing, which is what I, you know, I think is a lesson for all people to look at, any kind of advocacy, is to bring people together. And that's so important. But I also was really pleased to see that you're working with the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. So you pick whoever you want. I'm curious how you're using that group, how they're helping you and supporting some of the work that you're doing, because I've been to a number of their sessions over the years with parents. I'm curious how they help you.
Yeah, so we actually, our equity coordinator is fantastic, and she was able to get some of their members to work with, work with us, some of the Equity Ambassadors of Henrico High School on a workshop. And basically, they just kind of told us about the cycle of prejudice and how what we're doing is contributing to equality and justice in our schools, and they just really wanted to make sure that we had the necessary tools to continue our work. So I'm really thankful for that opportunity, and they gave us some really good resources about our leadership skills and how we can utilize that in group situations and how we can use that to create more equity in our schools. So, yeah.
That's great, great. They're great partners.
They are.
I want to add on, so I'm going to add on to that to say that normally during a regular school year that isn't virtual, we meet with, as a group, with a select number of Equity Ambassadors four times a year, and VCIC normally sponsors at least one of those events. So they've been a partner with us from day one, and we bring them in. So, and the students meet cross-district. It's really important that the students from all the schools get to come together and have these conversations, this daring dialogue about whatever the focus area is of that year. So that, that's a partnership that will continue.
They are great partners. And one thing I have had the benefit of as a board member is to sit in with parents who are working with VCIC. And what I would love to see, I don't know if y'all ever did this, was bringing parents and students together to have those important conversations. I don't think those happen enough. You know, oftentimes, it's in silos where parents, you know, talk to each other, but, you know, getting that parent-student communication going too in this realm, because I think so often, parents, you know, they, they don't see their kids as advocates. They don't see their kids as having really an understanding of, of a lot of, you know, meaty topics, and it's good for parents to get in those conversations with their kids so that, you know, maybe you can find some common ground that you didn't even know you had. So, but anyway, I think that's great, y'all, you as and them as partners. But thank you for the work that you're doing, and continue. I, I know you will be glad for the fall when we don't do this anymore. But, but anyway, thank y'all for being here.
Well, I echo too the comments and sentiments of my peers. So this is a quick question for each of you, right? So I want each of you to answer this question. I want you to speak quickly to your vision for the program as an Equity Ambassador, and what would you like to see the school division or for your individual school? If you could just ponder that for a moment and marinate on it, just your vision. As you are the Equity Ambassadors, we know we have our universal vision, but do you all have a unique perspective in that you are in a different context and a different, you know, environments? I'd just love to see. So anyone can go first. You don't have to go down the line.
Hi again, my name is Jayden, and I'm the executive representative from Glen Allen High School. And although it was extremely difficult to implement these programs virtually, I still feel that there can, a lot more initiatives be being done at Glen Allen High School in the future, particularly the, the communication from staff and faculty members to students, because a lot of students experience things that are inappropriate and unjust, and they don't really
and they don't really have a way to communicate that to staff. So I feel like there should be a more open, like Advisory Council that students can go to to communicate to staff and also to kind of figure out how do we talk about these issues and where do we go about it? So that's definitely a plan that I can see being implemented at Glen Allen High School. And also for issues such as equitable access to testing and to clubs and practices. Not a lot of students have transportation to and from practices, to clubs. And that's a really enriching part of your high school experience. So how can we bridge that gap? And also, how can we make standardized testing, free lunches, access to AP exams and other critical components of higher education? How can we make that more accessible? And so creating those spaces for student communication and also for more equitable access is a really important part of our future. And I can definitely see that being worked at at Glen Allen High School. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Don't y'all all rush to that mic now.
Hello, this is Kasia from Deep Run High School. One thing, you know, at Deep Run, I see is we have a lot of platforms to do work in equity. So Deep Run has a minority student union. They also have a very strong chapter of Equity Ambassadors. And then, parallel to that, we have a strong speech and debate team that works very closely with all two of those. So we have three groups, but I would really like to see them unified together, working together. Because in this virtual world, it was hard for them all to communicate with each other and stay connected. And it sort of became three different entities working on three different projects. So I want to make sure that the next coming school year, that we are able to work together, stay unified in the one main goal of Equity Ambassadors. But at the same time, one issue I've seen at Deep Run is we've sort of turned the equity issue, and I'm sure this is across really the globe, that this idea of equity is being turned into a lecture, that it's being turned into this idea of, we speak about it, and we just listen. And it's not something that we have an open conversation about. And like at Deep Run, we started uncomfortable conversations where we're having these open conversations with teachers, students, and everybody across the county, because it's open, that, you know, we're speaking about racial issues, religious and sensitive issues that, you know, students and parents may not talk about. So these types of issues that I feel are, should be open and should be really cooperative, and not just one person talking about it, and it's just a one-to-one conversation. Really, it should be something that's completely open, that everybody could have an opinion about, and everybody else could give a statement about, rather than one person sort of giving it as just a mass lecture. And go Wildcats.
Thank you. Awesome, awesome. Yep, awesome.
Hi, I'm Jack Lacy from Tucker High School again. And I think that what we really need as a program is more direct communication and collaboration with the administration and school board directly, because most of the initiatives done this year were done within the schools specifically and addressing, like Ms. Ogren said, and many of you, the problem of unity in our schools. And I think we're barely scratching the surface of systemic issues within our county and our schools specifically. So if we can work directly with the school board and actually try to bring together the two ends of the county, the east and west end, and our socioeconomic and racial inequities, it would really, you know, put our mission of Equity Ambassadors to work. Because right now, we're just actively doing things in our own schools and where we couldn't actually do things as a whole county.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, I'm the representative from Millsy Godwin High School. And the two things I want to focus on next year as an Equity Ambassador representative is focusing on providing equal opportunities for ESL students. Those are students that have the English as their second language. And especially this year, virtually, it's been very difficult for them. I have been an ESL student once, and I know that I can imagine how hard it is for them to learn another language in a virtual setting, because you don't get to participate, and you don't, you're not forced to speak. So you don't really learn the language as much. And I've seen through tutoring how difficult it is for them. So I definitely want to focus on them next year so we can provide like excessive amount of opportunities for them, tutoring and everything. In addition, we created the Equity Club this year, and it was welcomed with such a positive attitude. And everyone was so happy to have a platform to speak about mental health. Or our very recent meeting was about the hate towards Asian-Americans due to the pandemic. And a lot of students got emotional speaking about it. And it just inspired me to continue it and not only just listen to students, but also take what I hear from the students and try to implement changes at Godwin, or our community in general. So those are my two visions for next year.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janie Young from Freeman High School. And I want to second something Jack said about working more cross-county. I think that's something that we definitely could work on and develop a relationship. And of course, this year was different, because usually, we do have our cross-county meetings with Equity Ambassadors. But the virtual setting turned everything upside down. And I, and also, at Freeman, we have, similarly to Deep Run, lots of clubs that work together and have a similar mission with Equity Ambassadors, like our Black Student Union and our club Ola, our Latinx Student Association. And we have more coming. And we did collaborate some this year, but I would like to continue that. And I also would like us to have a closer relationship with the board, because I think sometimes we recognize the issues, but we're not sure, you know, how much can we do as students? And I think a closer relationship would develop, would help us achieve our goals. Something that comes up almost every year is our issue with the cafeteria and how it's like self-segregated and the way Freeman is built and the renovations and everything. You have one cafeteria with students who buy lunch and more students of color, and you have a section the opposite of that. And this issue is brought up every year, and we're like, how do we, you know, we can't just take down a wall. It's just our student, a group of students. But I think a closer relationship would help us achieve all these goals that brilliant students that I've had the chance of knowing and meeting and working with bring these ideas to life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Hello, I'm Si from Henrico. I believe I'm the last one to speak. So at Henrico, my goal, and I think the rest of Equity Ambassador's goal, is to kind of bridge that gap between all the student groups at Henrico. As you all may know, we have the International Baccalaureate Program. We have the Center for the Arts, and we have our zone programs, honors, AP classes, all of that. And while that gives us a lot of opportunities in terms of like diversity academically and in terms of extracurriculars, there's also a divide, especially in our clubs, like, clubs like Motta UN are very, very driven by a certain group of students, and there are other clubs that kind of are run by another group. So our, our goal, or at least my goal, is to kind of bridge that gap and get more people involved, because I believe that clubs are stronger with academic diversity as well as racial diversity and cultural diversity. So, yeah, so trying to bring that to club fairs next year, trying to bring more people of different academic backgrounds. Just like continue our initiatives that were kind of stopped by COVID-19. So we had this clothes closet, which was like a business attire closet, which was called Dress for Success. That was, the point of that was to allow students who didn't have access to business casual attire, a place to get that. So that'd be run through like thrift stores and donations and things like that. And that was put at a halt because of the pandemic. So really get that started up again. Yeah, just make sure that students are given the opportunities and resources they need to be part of that academic setting. So that's a little bit about Henrico. Thank you.
So much, yes.
Hi, I'm Paige Barron. I'm also from Glen Allen. And I'm a rising junior, so this was my first year as an actual member of Equity Ambassadors. So I'm really still learning, and it was a great experience for me. I think Jayden covered a lot of good ideas for change at Glen Allen. But one thing I was able to participate in this year was, I think it was mentioned earlier in the presentation, the Ethnic Studies Course Design. And in that, I engaged with a couple other students from different schools. And we were able to create sample lessons for a possible Ethnic Studies course that might be implemented later in time in Henrico. And it was just a really great experience to kind of be able to speak up and say, like, I haven't been learning this in school, and I think it should definitely be integrated as a part of curriculum and kind of just continue for student-by-student kind of opportunities that students can participate in to really take charge of what they're learning. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I want to again thank you all for your feedback, because each one of my peers and myself included, we care about your voices, we care about your perspective and opinions, and we are so thankful and grateful that you all are representing our Equity Ambassadors at our school. So thank you so much. Mrs., Dr. Manns, anything you just want to say?
I do want to make sure I say, they did an amazing job. I really can't say anything more. But I, I think it's important to note that we had over 279 applicants for Equity Ambassadors this year. So as much as these amazing individuals are here, we had so many applicants. And, and some of them, you know, did varied levels, right? Because COVID was hard. But it was just, I cannot express how proud I am of them and how proud I am of the ones who are not here with us. So I just want to make sure I shout them out, because not all of them are here, but they did work on, they did do the work that, that was asked of them. And they just beyond my expectations, beyond my expectations. So that's how I end.
Thank you all. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you once more. We really appreciate your efforts. And for those of you who are graduating and moving on, wishing you the very best and look forward to continuing the board and the administration, and look forward to continuing to work with the Equity Ambassador team. Thank you for your feedback and your outstanding presentation. All right, thank you.